Stand for Pledge of Lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan Van Horn.
President.
Governor Keener.
President.
Mark couple, now I want to say Barbara President.
All right, it's time to open it up for public comments, for anything not already, not already on the agenda. Please state your name and your address, please.
Is that for me to come up here?
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. My name is Jordan Holzberg from Surf Internet out of Elkhart, Indiana. And really, my main purpose come by tonight is really introduce myself and my position. So it's a newer position that we created last summer. We realized that some of our markets, as we're growing so fast, don't always get that maybe love and attention back to have somebody to say, hey, I need somebody from Surf and I need them right now. So that would be kind of where I fall in the play. It's a position called a Regional Market Manager. And actually, I've worked with Madeline a few times in a few things over the last few months, and she's been a pleasure to work with so far. And I appreciate you guys' partnership and really, you know, allowing us to be present inside, you know, inside you guys' city and giving out to Blue Lake there a little bit. So really, again, just kind of introducing myself, I do have a few stats while I'm here. Our initial build with Blue Lake comes out to about thirteen hundred and twenty-eight buildings. That would be residents and businesses. There's about a thousand here, though, inside city limits. It's up in, we've only been here for about fourteen to eighteen months, eighteen months being our kind of first area we turned on. And we've gotten close to about forty percent customers that are available for our service have signed up. So we really appreciate that, that's one of the fastest growing areas that we've had in that short a period of time, so. You guys have any questions or anything for me, I'll hang around.
Yeah, I mean, myself, I've heard nothing but good stuff about you. And let's watch your lead time right now, roughly, if a customer would call and...
Usually within forty-eight hours or so, we can get out here. There was a, when we first started the market, we had to get a few people out on this side of Indiana, but now that lead time's down quite a bit. Business can be a little bit longer, just because there's a survey. I saw you wrestling over there. Actually, we've been having business installed here for many years, many months, I almost said years, but many months. Hopefully, we got that worked out, and you guys were a little bit of our guinea pig to get some of the city buildings connected. But we do have someone more full-time now to do and take care of that. And then, if there's ever any issues, you can always get in touch with me and I'll get you, get someone, you know, resident or business, kept it in front of the line if we have to.
Do you have any cards or?
Absolutely, yeah, I'll hang out and give you some afterwards.
It's been a long meeting, I warned you.
That's okay, now, there's been some that I've been in for hours. It's good to hear, it's good to still learn about you guys also, so.
Is, just a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there service out for us by pressures?
Yes.
So, we need to talk about expanding when we get into Turtle Meadows out here.
Okay, is that a new area?
It's a new community.
New community, okay.
You're gonna hear about it tonight.
Well, that's part of the reason why I come to these things too, you kind of get a leading edge on those and maybe we could get some shared conduit going and things of that nature, so.
Yeah, and I spoke to Scott about it.
Did you already, okay.
Yeah, like, well, like a year and a half ago now, but, yeah, just, we're involved now.
Yeah.
We have, we think we might have a date, so.
Cool, all right. Well, I'm excited to hear about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Go ahead and comment.
I have a couple of comments, Kayla Krantz. I just want to ask that maybe we can make sure that the meeting minutes are getting proofread pretty well. It seems like the past couple of meetings, there was some significant errors in them that should not have been passed as they were. So if we could just make sure those are proofread, I don't know, it just seems a little bit embarrassing to me when a member of the public is proofreading them and catching errors, you know, that's not fair. Sorry, so, that's one comment. And then, I was just curious on an update on the Turtle Town Plaza. Because the last meeting, you guys approved upgrades to the lift station out there. And I was just curious what the change was, because you guys are pretty adamant that it was the property owner's fault and the business out there, and that they were the owners of that equipment. And then, last week, I don't know, you guys approved upgrades. So I was just curious what changed, what happened, put that hopefully.
As far as the, one, sorry, curiosity too, do we know yet when install is going to be?
We just got, the pump just came in, so, so that'll be a couple of weeks.
So from my end, it's kind of a he said, she said type of a thing. And at the end of the day, what we, I myself wanted to get to is a place where we felt like both parties were happy to get the equipment and that we were told, you know, by multiple parties that should be in there, you know, upgrades and things like that. So that moving forward, if we have issues, then I think we can know more of what the cause might be. So, yep. A little bit of, so, a little bit of mix of things that I think that yes, for sure need to get replaced. And then, yeah, just to give us more insight moving forward of what, yeah, what the issue has been.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, on to old business, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, Turtle Meadows bond.
Yep, so we introduced this ordinance at the last meeting. I'll go over it again pretty briefly here, I mean, you were just here and some of the public here, but so we get into this meeting. Is that the Indiana Finance Authority has implemented an infrastructure loan program to provide low interest loans to help residential developers create housing, which has been a big push by the IEDC, everyone, to try to get some more housing in communities in Indiana. So, this is a loan that was just approved by the Economic Development Commission of the town, which is a first step in the process. It will allow the IFA to essentially loan one point one million, or, issue a debt of one point one million dollars for the project, for the Biggs Development, and use that money for infrastructure. We will assign the note to the IFA, and you are just a conduit for the issuance of the debt. There is no liability of the town to pay it back.
It does not count against our bonding.
Correct, yeah, so, yeah, so I feel like I've heard it, yep.
Any comments or?
So this will allow for the issuance of bond and authorize Nathan Mel to sign all the bond documents.
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, Turtle Meadows bond.
I'll second, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, update on library project.
You want to give an update of the community coalition meeting, or you want me to?
Oh, why don't you go ahead and then I'll fill in.
Okay, so, we had a community coalition meeting on Monday along with the library. We kind of, we started discussing with the library board, some of the financial logistical issues and challenges that we have had. The library is wanting to get in there right away, they don't have money, obviously, they're trying to scale back the project. However, with the new legislation that is soon to be passed, we are going to be losing a significant amount of money in tax revenue, and I honestly do not think that the town can afford it. So, we did, we notified the library of that. Library also said, well, two of the library members said, well, we need to look at our finances as well, because they will be impacted as well, just like the school will be. So as of right now, I think what the community coalition is wanting to do, we've offered the library to just purchase the building, give the town back their, the money that they have invested, and kind of go from there. So, we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. So, I, do you see everything else? You were there too, pretty much it. It was a impressive meeting, so.
Quite so, yeah.
So, I don't think that we're going to be able to make it work at this point. Because there's just too many unknowns with the library, there's too many unknowns with our tax revenue within the next couple of years, just based upon what the state legislature is doing with property taxes. And I did, I did cancel the contract with the roofer, so.
Yeah, so if I want to expand that, yeah. Is there any discussion on, like, would we platter any differently, or would we just sell everything?
No, if we sold it, we would definitely get re-plant first.
All right.
Because, yeah, no matter what, we need to make, we need to do something with that parking lot, make it safer, because it's, it's a, anyone, Kevin probably tests walking out your car, it's like, yeah, yeah. So, we have another, like I said, we've got another meeting in three weeks. But, you know, the library's going to look at what they, you know, see if they can manage to purchase it, but I don't think that, I don't think that we're going to be able to come to a deal. So, the community coalition might need to put on the market.
All right, thanks for that. All right, new business, approval of CCMG contract.
Okay, so, we had our bid opening for our CCMG projects. This is going to reconstruct Conway, part of Blessed, and then part of Douglas Street. We were awarded five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars through Indots. With our match being around, I mean, when we applied, our match was around two hundred thousand. It did come in under engineers' estimates for the, for just the paving and stormwater portion. We only did get one bid, but like I said, they came in under, at seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, twelve dollars and eighty-one cents.
First time I've heard of that, in six years.
What?
Coming in under engineers' estimates.
Yeah, I don't care. So, with that, though, we did have three alternate bids to replace some problem infrastructure with water and a couple of sewer spots, but not very many, explaining why they're all water. I spoke to Holly today this morning, that we could use the water, or the bond participation note to pay for those upgrades. Which, I shouldn't, I talked to you about that, so. And then, for that, the little tiny bit of stuff that's in there, we were used to our operating funds. But I do have, what we're using to pay for it, we did a budget for this project, so, so we don't have to use up as much economic development income tax as what we were planning, but, again, it came in a little bit under budget, so.
Well, it's a needed area for us, so.
So, with that, Holly, you want to walk us through what they do?
Sure.
Or I can pull up the email?
So, Holly, I want to review those, for those who don't know me, anyway. So, the first is to accept the bid as received, open and read aloud at the public meeting, is your name? So if you guys can do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid for the project as listed.
I'll second, I have a motion and a second to accept the bid, all those in favor say aye.
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 The next is to make the motion to award the bid to the lowest, most responsible and responsible bidder, the Crawford Excavating, for the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-three and ninety-three cents.
Make a motion that we
That's right, I don't remember.
Award the bid to Crawford Excavating, who's the lowest and most reputable bidder.
I'll second, I have a motion and a second to award the bid to Crawford Excavating, the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and then, the next is to approve and sign the notice of award and the Form ninety-six and the funding request letter associated with the awards that we just agreed.
Just a funding letter?
A funding letter, Form ninety-six, which is acceptance of the bid and a notice of award to notify the contractor that they've been awarded the contract.
Maybe we can do that all in one.
Okay, you may have said this, or maybe it's just implied, you reviewed the agreement, recommend approval, yeah.
We recommend, everything was in order.
I recommend that we go ahead and approve the funding letter and Form ninety-six and the notice of award.
I'll second, I have a motion and a second to the approval of the funding letter and Form ninety-six and the notice. All those in favor, signify, say aye.
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 And then, the last motion that we need is to approve the funding, speaking, of the owner contractor agreement outside of a meeting to meet and that family is getting it back to Indots.
It needs to be done by next week.
So as soon as it's received from the contractor, then we can either sign it.
Yeah, normally, we don't need to sign it, we passed Northwood saying that President is the signer, so. So I don't have to hunt all of those down?
All right, I make a motion that we approve the owner contract signing agreement to be done outside of a meeting. That would be Nathan Horn.
All right, I'll second, I have a motion and a second to approve the owner contract to be signed outside of means by myself. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, we already have one, yeah.
It's all in, right?
Um, no, two of them are you, and then one of them is just him. The last one's just him.
I can give you tips on color corretion tasks if you'd like.
I need to put what happened with all my tasks, okay?
Nice to know what color you, what you are.
Well, it's blue, right?
Tibet.
Yeah. All right, moving on, approval of Crosby's contract extension change order.
So this will be change order number six, to Crosby's contract. So there have been some expanded scope items, particularly started to impact projects. So Crosby has requested a contract extension of two hundred and five days and the associated costs with general conditions to cover that extended duration of the project. And so that's two hundred and five days and then a cost of one hundred and seventy cents a day.
What were they doing?
What's that?
What's the expanded scope?
Um, we've added a lot of stuff.
Okay, that's why I was curious. Just trying to save you time, read that, okay?
We have, we have a second session.
Okay, okay.
I think we're, I think we're moving forward in a good direction here, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve Crosby contract extension number six and the change order.
Second that, I have a motion and a second to approve Crosby's contract extension change order number six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, approval of pay-up for project A.
Uh, labor standards change order.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Approval of labor standards change order.
All right, so with the extension of Crosby contract, we also need to extend the labor standards contract as it is required that we have labor standards inspector, you know, but, yeah, administrator for the project, so. So my client, Peter, who is, who has been working with us for the past year, has submitted an extension for, I believe it was for twenty, it's on the side of the table. Yeah, twenty thousand. So he has already been out of contract for the past, like, two months. So this would cover that two-month period that he's been out of contract and then extend it until October.
Is this something we should have kept on upon?
No, it's, it's, no, you have to be certified and all that, so.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the labor standards.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the labor standards contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now on to approval of pay-up project A.
All right, so the most recent pay application, payment twenty-four on it, there was thirty-six thousand, four hundred fifty dollars for masonry for the Lab Grit Building, seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars for roofing, metal siding, twenty thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars, twenty cents for framing drywall insulation at the Lab Grit Building, fifty-two thousand, five hundred thirty dollars for non-coated water pumps, two thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, twenty cents for UV, plumbing above ground, nineteen thousand, six hundred twenty dollars, and then various areas of electrical, forty-two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, and the general work amounts slash general work conditions, sixty-five thousand, nine hundred four dollars and eighty-two cents. Total work for this payout, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Amount of application, two hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve payout A, number twenty-four, the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve payout number twenty-four, private day, amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, eighty-five cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eighty-two point four percent complete.
I like seeing the API pay-ups way better, because they're like ninety percent complete, so.
All right, discussion of Turtle Meadows ready grant.
So, Mr. Biggs received a ready award in the amount of, how much?
Uh, one million.
One million for the Turtle Meadows product, project, from the RDA. If, if the Ray funds go directly to his company, it would be a taxable event, correct? So what he has done with another project is, the RDA gave that ready award to the city, or a town, the city has, the circumstance would be the town in the circumstance. And then, the town would just pay the, up to the one million, the one million dollars of the ready awards for the infrastructure that he's doing on-site, instead of the ready going to him and him paying, go to the town and the town pay. We would have an agreement that would spell this all out and protect the town, that you don't have any obligations, and you're just taking the ready award and paying the director, or them directly. But I wanted to bring up the concept, he can answer any questions if I missed something, but, before we go down that path, just make sure that you're okay with it. Again, you wouldn't have any obligations, it's just, the award would go to you instead of him, and then you would pay the contractors about one million dollars. You don't have to agree with that, I just wanted to kind of make you aware of it and see if you had any concerns before we proceeded.
Is there any benefits for the town to do with this, or is it all, if that makes sense, or, you know, is there anything the town gets out of type of thing, or is it mainly just to kind of?
It's really a way just to ensure that there's not slippage on that money that goes in the project, because otherwise, we end up paying like forty percent of it in income tax.
Gotcha.
It's just a super inefficient way for me to receive that grant directly. And so, as we've been working through lots of different ways we can make this project work,
Right.
including this RIF loan that we talked about earlier and from IFA, this is just one more little way that we can ensure that you're going to have the most effective use of all the sources of money.
Um, so with, I had a question, actually. So with Ossean, is their clerk treasurer, like, doing all this bookwork then, and are you refund, or are you compensating them at all for?
I don't think we are, now.
Or they're reversing, or, yeah, reversing for their time spent on this?
Yeah, I, I don't think so, Madeline, but we kind of have a larger relationship with them. There's other funding sources too that they're managing. Through TIF's involved in it, right?
Oh, okay.
There's TIF involved, so they may be doing that through the TIF.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, I want to do something that's fair and equitable enough for some administrative that, you know, you guys. I think, yeah, we put something in agreement to make sure the town's protected. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it, it actually only makes really logical sense, and at the end of the day, as soon as we complete the project, we turn around and we turn over to the town. It's the town's asset, so, it's like, why not have the town pay for the asset that you're going to have anyway? So, I mean, it makes a whole lot more sense than what we've been doing for thirty years the other way.
It's just a lot more uptake, of all.
There's just a few more hoops to jump through, but, yeah, in this case, it will save the project some pretty significant dollars and just keep that efficient money that, you know, it's state money that's, that's coming to Busco, so, you know, go for, tear Busco for bringing that in, you know, state dollars, it's just, let's do it efficiently.
Yeah, cool. Any questions, or any concerns?
No, no, I don't. Okay, likely have something by the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, approval of plat map.
Um, so the plant commission met last Wednesday concerning the replat of Z-Sow subdivision. If you remember, you had vacated a couple alleys that were running right through the middle of his property. Well, those are vacated now, and now he wants to split the lot into two areas, or to two different lots. And plant commission passed, and now it just comes to you guys for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve plat, plat map for Z-Sow.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Z-Sow plat map. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The contract, I expect, for this one?
Uh, no, this is the big map that you guys will sign. The second thing.
Do what?
The second thing.
Yeah, you're good. Yeah.
Through the angles, you'll be touched.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
My shirt's sick.
Oh, I saw that, see? All right, uh, trying to renew the contract for the humane shelter.
Uh, yes, so the humane shelter is set in their annual contract, it remains at two thousand dollars. Yeah, for a cap, and then.
Not a cap. Don't have to be securing your cats.
And then just a rundown of what all, um, we have paid and what's been brought in from just the town over the past several years, so we have not, um, last year I think we were only at fifteen or sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty, it's six.
During COVID, people were just keeping all those frays around, I guess, I don't know.
I'll make a motion that we sign our contract for the humane shelter.
I'll second, have a motion in a second to approve the renewal of the humane shelter, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And sewer adjustments.
Um, so in January, we had to estimate readings, um, and with estimation, the next month when we actually do readings, that there are always a ton of people that usually use minimum that then go over because the, you know, we try to catch everything, but we don't always get it. There are a lot less though, because number one, we've got about forty percent of all our meters as the radio reads, so, so you know, we can go out and actually read those. But also Natalie and Tina both did a good job of trying to sort out, you know, when we did do estimations of, you know, okay, well, who uses minimum and, you know, let's make sure that, that we've got it up to that three thousand, just so then we don't see a
Right.
see a big jump, so. So I believe it's only around eight hundred dollars this time, which I know in past it's been like three thousand, four thousand dollars whenever we do this, so. This is just wanting to not adjust the water, just adjust the sewer portion so that it's back down to the minimum, so.
So that's for the fairness to the customer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we make sewer adjustments to represent the water usage.
I'll second, have a motion and a second to approve the sewer adjustments, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, it's basically just giving away the summer spring credit in the middle of the year, so.
All right, next up, emergency response plan.
I sent to you the updates to the emergency response plan for the water plant, um, and I know that Jeremy said that you guys just need to sign off on it, well, if we make any updates to any of these plans, you guys need to pass that again and sign off on it, so. So we just need a motion to pass the amended version of the emergency response plan that I sent out.
I didn't see any issues with them, it's spelled out quite a few different scenarios, huh, so. Make a motion, we approve the updated emergency response plan.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to update the emergency response plan, approve that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, bill of sale for the police cars.
All right, so finally, um, we have two police cars that are, have been sitting at the PD for a couple months now, that we are need to get rid of. Dustin did not want to take out all the stuff that's in there, um, so that kind of limited who we could sell to. Just because it is kind of a pain to take out all that stuff and then, you know, if we sold, if we did sell it to another department, then they'd have to put up all that again. So I, um, I actually have been in contact with the Ashley Police Department, they are looking for two new, or they're looking for vehicles. Um, I asked them if they'd be interested in looking at what we had, they came down the other day and looked and they are very much interested in purchasing both, both the Durango and the Charger, so. That bill of sale would just, you know, make it possible that they're, that they could purchase those vehicles. At nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars each. That would then go back into the general fund and, you know, eventually get spent on other various vehicles, I'm sure, so.
All right, uh, you have any questions or any concern or anything on that, Ben?
No, I'm good. It's a good thing we're, I'm capitalizing on it.
I'll make a motion, uh, we approve the bill of sale for the police cars, uh, the Dodge Durango, Dodge Charger, each of them at a price of nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, bill of sale for the police cars, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, that's if my business is correct, must we add something? All right.
What, did you want more?
All right, Department of Reports. Jeremy's, so they're busy, uh.
He says that they read half the meters, that's because half the meters are radio reads, so.
I know they did, uh, did a good job with the snow, that first one, you know, I woke up early in the morning, it was already plowed and stuff, so.
Yeah, they, the boys came in early, the plows, so.
Appreciate all them, thank you good on that.
Sure.
All right, um, Mr. Cryer, getting the Department all ready to go for spring and all the activities coming?
Gentlemen, yeah, we've been kind of waiting for this ice age to pass over. To get back outside, but we've been doing work on inside buildings and stuff like that, new water heater in Diamond One concession along with the kitchen sink, and did some work on, on the cooler in there and stuff, or the pop, et cetera, et cetera. Been working on the inside of the Scott Building with some updates and, uh, see that, I did lay out the, uh, new volleyball court with some stakes and stuff like that, and I see Jeremy probably wants to wait until May until they go on with that, and I can see that, but it's going to be a nice volleyball court out there, that add on to some family things back there at the park and, uh, uh, keep things going back there, so, uh, other than that, everything is good at the park and, uh, appreciate the town coming in and doing the snow and stuff like that. I took the tractor and the bucket out there the other day and it was nine degrees, wind blowing fifteen mile an hour, I lasted for about twenty minutes. But other than that, uh, you know, they're doing a nice job there. Uh, they did have, I don't know whether Jeremy mentioned it up there or not, but they did get the, uh, uh, thing dug out from the back of the pickleball courts out into the woods and put drains high in there and stuff like that.
Where I always thought it's a special trail.
Yeah, they're still working at that, and we had a problem there the last few years, uh, part of that trail went back at Thresher's.
Yeah.
You probably know, going over there to the top there, but I think they've pretty much alleviated that or we're going to get close to it. And other than that, everything's good.
There's a couple times when I'd be running and it's like, and it's too soggy, you go through the grass, it's like, well, here we go.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Let's see, four weeks from next Wednesday, in other words, five weeks from today, our first softball high school game back there on Diamond Two.
Oh, that sounds cool.
It usually is.
We're going to have to drill through that ice bag here a little bit, but we're here now.
I've played in snow many, many times, so, yeah.
We appreciate it very much, Department.
Thanks, man.
It looks good. All right, uh, do you have anything, sir?
I do not.
All right, I do not have anything, Mr. King.
Uh, I just wanted to update, uh, Marcus No had done his Eagle Scout project back at the park, building the Owl Houses. Well, last evening, he had his Board of Honor and received his Eagle Scout Award, so that was a really neat thing to witness. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Tom and Crystal Wagner and Dan DePue, Mark No, senior, as far as the work they put in, the boys, they still have a good number, number of young men, and, um, they're doing quite well back there, so.
How long has he, um, has he been with them?
Um, let's see, I stopped shortly after I was elected to the town council, so, four years and so.
Well, if he was in, he was in, he was in Cub Scouts, I'm sure he was in Cub Scouts, that was like.
Yes, Marcus, or, oh, Marcus, okay, so yeah, he was, yeah, so it, probably about ten years, I would say, just how much time it takes to get through, but getting his, um, arrow of light and then his Eagle Scout Award, but he's, now he's interested in coming back as a leader, so that's, uh, pretty neat that he's invested, and he's also a resident of Michigan. So his family, yeah, and he come back here because of his roots, so it's pretty neat, so.
Good for him, congratulations, Dan, that's cool.
I've just been busy with year-end stuff, um, I did meet with the contractor today to get quotes for the scaffolding floors, I have another meeting tomorrow for another quote. So hopefully we can get those floors done before things really ramp up, uh, in the bathrooms and the kitchen, um, to try and match what's already out in the main room, so. And then, yeah, there's just several little things that are taking up a lot of time, just, you know, easements and water lines and HR stuff and, yeah, so, so just a lot of little stuff that's been taking up a lot of time, but, and I've had a nog stump, I feel like, so, so there's that.
All righty, uh, that's all, everybody, thank you for coming very much, have a great rest of your night and enjoy your.